Can we bring the meeting to order? This will be the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, November 18, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. And Commissioner Noah Sad will lead us in the pledge.
All right, for those of you in the military.
Attention. What do you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board of -- or the Board Chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light when it indicates you have 30 seconds. And then you will see a red light, and at that time, you will please discontinue your In addition to the opening public comments, the public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified as for possible action. And closing public comment, it is requested that members of the public provide public comment on those agenda items that are identified as for possible action, which those agenda items are considered and not during opening public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment is now open.
Roger, Adam. During a prior meeting, Commissioner Rice asked Mr. Booth about outreach on ordinance 2021-1583, which I have encouraged all five commissioners to vote no on. And this was regarding the outreach to the community. You have Meridian Park, which is a business community park there, and you also have some tenants that probably, in the buildings they were in, were probably there before Meridian Park, just southwest of the intersection of Airport and Hayborn Roads. And part of Commissioner Rice's question, at least from my recollection, was what kind of outreach there were to residences. There are at least four residences within a mile of this proposed site, and the Airport Commission as well, the Airport Advisory Board. And Mr. Booth answered that there was outreach, but I just happened to -- his answer was rather limited, and I thought misleading. And I just happened to run into him after the first reading meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on this ordinance. And my recollection of what he said was, oh, I didn't realize Commissioner Rice asked me about residences and the Airport Advisory Board. And of course, during the Planning Commission meeting of October 12th, which any of you can, if you viewed it, can see for yourself, the -- one of the Planning Commissioners requested that, or at least asked, was there any outreach to the Airport Advisory Board, and was told, no, it wasn't necessary, and they weren't going to do it. And Mr. Booth confirmed that, yes, he was there at the meeting, and that was his recollection as well. And of course, there was no outreach to any residences. So this is a matter of clarification. I encourage you to talk to Mr. Booth to get his version, if you don't believe my version of our discussion. Also, the outreach, I think, is very important in this issue because I think government, good government involves not just what's required by statute. And I believe this commission in the past has gone further than that. I can give the Genoa rezoning, or the trying to annex 50 or more than 50 acres, and with no outreach to those people that were going to be annexed, as an example of that. I believe this commission will consider that, and I hope they will. But there was no outreach to the people that actually work in Meridian Park, or to three businesses that are right next to Meridian Park, that are just southwest of the intersection I referred to before. And in going out to these businesses, I found that at least 17 owners and tenants had no knowledge of this. Is that it?
Roger, that's coming back for a second reading, if that helps.
Yes, December 2nd, is that correct, sir?
Right, yes, sir.
I wanted to clarify the issue that I did. Thanks for your allowing me to do that.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from chambers? Is there anybody on Zoom, Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no public comment online at this time.
Anybody from the chambers want to make a couple of comments? Amy, you want to talk about redistricting? All right, seeing no further public comment. Approval for the agenda. For possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order, to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, and to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda, or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion, and it's by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Noah Sad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Approval of the previous minutes for possible action. Discussion to approve the draft minutes of the October 7, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Marsha.
I move that we approve the draft minutes of October 7, 2021, regular meeting of the county, Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the consent calendar. Motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through F.
Mr. Chairman? I move that we accept items A through F on the consent calendar.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, a second by Commissioner Tarkanian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to the administrative agenda. This will be item number one. For presentation only, ceremonial presentation proclamation, 2021P-108, recognizing Krista Palmer as Tokyo 2020 Olympic bronze medalist. Krista?
Which one are you going to use? That one? Okay. I'm not usually on this side of the aisle. First of all, I want you to know, we got through this so quickly, just to be able to get you out of here in time. This is really an honor for me to present this proclamation, being involved, from a sports family my whole life, knowing how difficult it is to achieve. What Krista has accomplished is really a truly amazing. I want to put it in perspective. Instead of reading the proclamation, I'm just going to try to put in perspective of what she did. How many of you have known anybody, anybody in your entire life, that is one of the top three people in their chosen field? Put that in perspective. In the entire world, one of the top three people in her entire field. Then throw into the fact that she came from a community of a little over 60,000 people, probably less when you were here, and she's one of the top three in the entire world. And finally, she accomplished something in the Olympics that no one from the United States had done in 33, 35, 34 years, 33 years, 33 years. Nobody had medaled in this event, you know, in 33 years since 1968. I mean, this is really, truly, an amazing accomplishment. And the best thing about Krista is not only did she make these accomplishments, she came back to Gardenville, or to Minden, Douglas County, right after the Olympics, and had an event at the Swim Center. And now she came back in person to get this proclamation. I said to her, it's really nice for you to be here in person. She said, of course, this is my hometown. Well, your hometown is very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. I really, truly love my community so much. Just seeing the support that I have behind me during the Olympic Games was just so special to me. It's been a wild ride getting all the way to this point. I mean, I've had so many injuries throughout all my athletic careers, in gymnastics and trampoline, and I think it was God's fate that just really left me, led me to diving. And so I'm really grateful that, you know, this small-town girl was able to make it this far, and I could not have done it without my community. So I want to thank you guys so much for having me out here and just sharing in this success with me.
You know, I'm just going to say one final thing, because she doesn't want to pat herself too much on the back for this, but it isn't like she was in diving her entire life. What she mentioned was she, her first choice was in gymnastics, and she had a devastating injury, and she had to change sports, and you didn't change it till you're freshmen or college. It's even more amazing what she's done.
Right, thank you.
Krista, don't go away.
Yeah.
You come from the driest state in the nation.
Why do you think she took up diving?
Well, I dive in chlorinated pools, so.
Oh, that's quite an accomplishment. Would you care to share with everybody what it's like, you get ready to go in your event, and you're dealing with judges, and the crowd, and all of that? It's got to be a lot. Just kind of give a little recap.
You know, all my life, I have really thrived off of performing in front of people. And I've never, you know, I'm a competitive athlete, but I've always shaped my mindset to be a performance athlete, because I truly, truly love to get out in front of people and show people what I love to do, and showcase what I can do. And all throughout my life, my parents, my family, has really been supportive of all my competitions, and it's just amazing that I have this family behind me. They've shown up for many of my international competitions, and so having their support since I was a young, young little gymnast is really what brought me to this point of enjoying being out there and performing, and really just seeing it in my mindset is it's something I love to do. And I am getting this opportunity to do it, and travel to do it, and, you know, I think shorts, sports are such a short time in our life, and we got to, you know, enjoy it. So I think, you know, this year with it being in Tokyo, and there's no spectators, it really, you know, presented itself with some adversity there, because I enjoy performing in front of people. But when I was performing there, it didn't feel like I was performing in front of nobody, because everybody back home was posting, they were following, I had so many support messages, and our whole USA team was there cheering me on. So the stands were not completely silent, people were still up there cheering for me, and that was just a really memorable and special experience that I got to have.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noah Sad?
If I may ask a question. Krista, are we going to see you in another Olympics year four years from now?
I would like to.
Good.
Now I'm going two and a half years away, so it's a little bit less. You know, we spent the last five, long five years training for this Olympic Games, and all the adversity that we faced, it's, it was a lot. So I'm taking this time to really step back a little bit from my sport, get to do the things that I haven't gotten to do for a long time, really enjoy the holidays with my family, and recover an injury that I've been facing, and then from there, I want to step into it again, and, you know, if my body permits me to, I would love to go at it another round.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions from the board?
Mark? For a minute there, when you first got up, I thought maybe you were a member of the polo team, based on your jacket, but maybe water polo is closer anyways. But anyways, I especially appreciate the fact that you wore your Olympic uniform today. That's really special, and we don't often get, obviously, as Mr. Tarkanian says, we don't get the opportunity to meet our Olympic medalists, much less even our Olympic athletes. So we're very honored that you could visit us today and share your moments with us. So thank you.
It's really an honor every time I put on this outfit, and this was my opening ceremonies outfit. I haven't really gotten to wear it for any other event, so this is special for me to be able to put it back on and remember all the memories that I had.
Mark, just for your knowledge, they don't ride a horse in water polo.
You know, I'm a horse person, so, you know.
Krista says she had her medal. Would you guys want her to show the medal to you?
It's in the pocket.
Commissioner Tarkanian, is not a Nevada water polo team analogous to the Jamaican bobsled team?
That's a very good one, yes. Can we get a picture?
Yes.
You want, you want, you want the proclamation?
Yes.
Number two. For presentation only, ceremonial presentation proclamation, 2021-099, to Miss Nevada 2021, Marcy Renee Tool? Is she here?
Marcy is on Zoom, is my understanding?
Hello, I am on here. I just don't think my, it is showing me on the screen or anything.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Hi, thank you guys so much for having me on Zoom today. I really appreciate you working with me on this.
Well, Marcy, it's nice to talk with you in person. I think, I don't know if we spoke on the phone, or just through the emails and stuff, but when I saw that you had won this, you won Miss Nevada, I just thought it was a great accomplishment. My wife had been involved in pageants, she never won the state of anything, so you've accomplished something great. And I just thought, coming from Gardenville and beating everybody else in the entire state, it was a great accomplishment, and we wanted to give you this proclamation. I'm going to read this proclamation, because she's not here, if that's okay, because, okay? It's, "Whereas, after moving to Gardenville at the age of two, Marcy Renee Tool has grown up in Douglas County. Whereas Marcy Renee Tool," if I hope I pronounced that name right.
It's Macy, I'm so sorry. It's Macy Tool.
"Macy Renee Tool has previously held the local titles of Miss Douglas County's Outstanding Teen 2013 and Miss Douglas County 2015. She was a 2015 graduate of Douglas High School and a member of the varsity cheer squad. Throughout her school years, she was also a member of the Carson Valley Synophonia Orchestra. Whereas Macy Renee Tool has won over $21,000 in scholarships, Macy is pursuing a film and theater degree from the College of Southern Nevada, while also working as a personal assistant to elusiveist David Copperfield. Throughout her years of service, Macy is an advocate of the Alzheimer's awareness. And whereas Macy Renee Tool was crowned Miss Nevada on July 2, 2021, in Las Vegas, Nevada, therefore be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, along with the Douglas County staff and residents, in congratulating Miss Macy Renee Tool as Miss Nevada 2021."
Thank you guys so much. Thank you so much, Damian Tarkanian, first of all, for approaching me about the proclamation itself. It's really an honor to represent, hello, it's really an honor to represent the entire county of Douglas, which is my home on the national stage for the 100th anniversary of Miss America, coming up in just here in a month. So thank you guys so much. It's been incredible the last nine years, even going for this title, having the entire support of my community every time I go out. So thank you all for this proclamation, it means everything to me.
Well, it's wonderful. Graduate of Douglas High School in 2015, there'll be a lot of people in Douglas County watching you. When is the date that it'll be on?
I will be leaving for Miss America on December 8, but Miss America will be hopefully broadcasted live on December 16.
Macy, this is Commissioner Engels.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Congratulations on this significant achievement. And one of the things the county has been working on, that maybe you can kind of help with, and, number one, go win the pageant. So, and you may know it or not, but we've been working on getting the movie industry to Douglas County, because Douglas County is like a big back lot. It has beautiful scenery, we got cowboys, and old history, and westerns, and there've been a lot of movies done here, and just last summer, there was a production company in Minden, and the Hallmark Channel was up at the lake.
That's awesome.
So when you, when you get back from your competition, maybe we can get you to help with Lisa Granahan, to get some of these outfits down there in Hollywood up here, to do some production work, so.
I'd love to, I'd love to help bring the industry, that means everything, to my home in Douglas County.
Okay.
And especially, I'd love to bring the Miss America crown home to Douglas County. We've never had a Miss Nevada go on to win Miss America, and, you know, why not start off the next 100 years of Miss America with some history, finally bringing it home to Nevada?
That a girl. Don't let everybody think we're a bunch of rubes out here in Nevada. That's a great accomplishment. Good for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Oh, there she is. Getting colder. Okay, number three. For presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation, 2021P-105, declaring November 14 through 2021 as Nevada Flood Awareness Week in Douglas County.
Everybody put your hip boots on. Okay, Courtney. Getting a little hot today. County of Douglas, proclamation 2021P-105, by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, declaring the week of November 14 through the 20th, 2021, as Nevada Flood Awareness Week. Whereas Douglas County recognizes the significant threat flooding poses to the residents, the county and our local economy, having endured repeated flood events from the water, from our watershed in the Carson River, Pine Nut Creek, Buckeye Creek, Johnson Lane Wash, Buck Brush Wash watersheds, including historic floods of 1955, 1997, 2006, 2014, 2015, and 2017. It's a wonder we haven't dissolved. Whereas Douglas County is a particular, in particular, risk of flooding from slow-rising riverine flooding in the winter and swift flash flooding during the summer. And whereas during Nevada Flood Awareness Week, local, state, and federal agencies across the state are working together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, and how to protect their homes and families from a flood, and a plan for recovery. And whereas Nevada Flood Awareness Week 2021 will be held statewide the week of November 14 through 20, with the theme Nevada Floods, Are You Prepared? And the corresponding website is www.nadafloods.org. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, recognizing November 14 through 20, 2021, is Nevada Flood Awareness Week, and supports the increased public awareness of flood threats, encouraging all our county residents to take action. Adopted this 18th day of November 2021, Board of Commissioners, signed, John Engels. And this is for you.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Courtney Walker, for the record. Every year, we participate in the state Nevada Flood Awareness Week. It's usually designated for a week in November, to get everyone ready for the potential for a winter widespread flood event. It could occur. We did get a pretty substantial rain there in October, much welcomed sight. It did bring the rivers quite, quite up from the low flows that we were experiencing before that. So it really only takes a few large, powerful storms to pull us out of drought and put us right back into a flood situation. So just bringing the awareness out there. It's a great website, nadafloods.org. It's a great partnership between several different agencies, in trying to bring flood awareness to our communities. We like to get people aware of it before the flood event is actually occurring, because at that point, it might be a little late. Even though we did mention it's the driest state in the nation, we're wild swings, drought, flood, drought, flood. So there you have it.
Any comments from the board?
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
While I have the opportunity, Ms. Courtney Walker, I wanted, once again, thank you for your participation in our little community event we had out on, out in the Johnson Lane area a couple of weeks ago, alleviating a lot of the concerns and fears, and bringing to mind what we're actually doing out there in regards to flood mitigation. So I know it was helpful on behalf of the residents out there, and I know that Commissioner Tarkanian and I really appreciate your attendance and participation. Thank you.
Don't go away. Courtney?
Sorry. Don't leave.
Courtney took a department that was nonexistent, and she and her crew made it a very vital part of the county system. So good work. Thank you. Now you're excused. All right, number four. For presentation only. The county manager will provide an overview of ethics in government, and its policies and practices within Douglas County. Mr. Cates?
This item is on the agenda today. After some conversations I had with the chairman, really wanted to kind of remind people of how ethics in government works, and how we apply it specifically in Douglas County. It's not meant to be, to replace the annual ethics and training that we provide. It is merely to go and It is merely to go into a little bit of detail about its applicability here in Douglas County. I don't think this will take too long. I'm sure we'll be done by 5 o'clock. So, I'll go ahead and get started. In the beginning, the Lord created heaven and earth. Just kidding. Well, that is a major source of ethics, so it was worth mentioning that. So, first of all, I just want to talk about what is ethics in government? And there's a lot of ways that, to define it. And I thought this was a, a really helpful explanation. This is from a professor of political science, science from the University of Chicago. Government ethics applies to the process, behavior, and policy of government and the public officials who serve in an elected or appointed positions. The role of government and its public officials is to serve the public interest with ethical awareness and ethical actions. A public official must not use his or her position for personal gain and should avoid even the appearance of having a conflict of interest. An ethical awareness of the obligation to act in the public interest will normally promote fairness and justice and advance the common good. I can say that having spent my whole career in public service, how important ethics is for what we do. It's essential to maintaining the public trust. And when I started this position back in March of 2019, I wrote a letter to all the county employees that was featured in the county newsletter. And I just wanted to read a few experts excerpts from that that are relevant to ethics. My goal as Douglas County Manager is simple, to make Douglas County a showcase of excellence in government. This can only be achieved by focusing on our organizational culture. We must promote a culture of integrity, accountability, and transparency to build trust. Public service is a privilege. We are entrusted by the public to be good stewards of their money. As good stewards, we must never put personal advantage above the public interest. There is no place in this organization for anyone who would betray these values. I ask for your help to promote them, to encourage coworkers to live by them and shed light whenever any of us fall short of them. It is through that commitment as an organization that we will restore and keep the public trust. So, there are laws around ethics in government. Chiefly is the Nevada Ethics Laws, NRS 281A. I won't go into a lot of detail, but just a few highlights. The Nevada Commission on Ethics is charged with providing guidance on the interpretation of NRS 281A. They will also offer advisory opinions to public officers on ethical matters. Any public officer can ask them for an opinion and they'll render a confidential opinion, whether it's a hypothetical or something that they, they may have done or contemplate doing. They also investigate and adjudicate ethics complaints regarding public officers and employees. There also is a code of ethical standards within NRS 284, 281A. And it deals primarily with conflicts between private interests and public duties. You do not want to use your public position to advance your private interests. You don't even want to give the appearance of an impropriety. It talks about pecuniary interests, and those are interests where you're receiving something of value, where you, you know, it's a financial benefit to you. It also talks about a commitment in a, in a private capacity. So, the commitment that you have to people, whether it be your family or another employer or something like that, you have to take those things into account so that you're not using your public position in order to further those private interests. The applicability of the statute is on state and local officers, both elected and appointed, as well as all public employees in Nevada. It does not, however, include the state legislators. They tend to exempt themselves from a lot of state laws. The judicial officers, because they have their own judicial ethics and their own process for that. And advisory bodies, because advisory bodies aren't making any decisions, they're, they're providing advice to, to another public body. Douglas County Code, we have a few codes that are relevant to ethics in government.
Mr. Cates, can I, can I interrupt you just a quick moment here?
Sure.
When you say exemptions, advisory bodies, does that include the advisory boards of this commission?
Yes, I believe that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that we do provide them ethics training as well, but those statutes do not necessarily apply to them because they don't have final decision-making in their And I know Mr. Ritchie is more expert than I am, so if I'm incorrect, feel free to correct me.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just.
Douglas County Code, Chapter 2 of Douglas County Code is specifically 02.090, deals with disciplinary action. It says that employee may be disciplined by his appointing authority for any cause or causes listed in subsection B. It says not limited to, but it specifically spells out, and I listed a few that are relevant to discussion of ethics. Number four, has committed an act or acts that would tend to embarrass or discredit a county, whether such acts or acts were committed on or off duty. Has used or threatened to use political influence in securing employment, promotion, leave of absence, transfer, change of pay grade, pay or character of work. Number 11, has sought or accepted any gift. So, a few sections in here that are worth pointing out. The purpose of this section, it's the public policy of Douglas County that local government officers.
Recording in progress.
Local government officers and employees are encouraged to disclose to the extent that.
What's going on? Let me stop.
I think it's in the other room.
Test, test. Are we good? Okay. So, improper governmental action and whistleblower protection. So, it is the policy of the county to encourage employees from reporting improper governmental actions and that they not be retaliated against. The definitions of improper governmental action are broader than just ethics, but include those violation of any state law, violation of an ordinance. Those would definitely relate to what we have for ethics in state law and in ordinance. And the reporting of improper governmental action, I think this is an important run, one. A local government officer, employee who is encouraged to report and disclose suspected improper government action. They can do that by phone, mail, or in person as appropriate. And there is a chain of command to this. They are to report that to their supervisor, department head, or elected official, consistent with the Douglas County policies and procedures regarding chain of command. So, a line level staff, the expectation would be that they'd bring that to their supervisor. I report to the board, so if I had an issue, I would, I would bring that to the commissioners. However, if they don't want to do that, maybe it's against their supervisor or something like that, they're free to go to the county manager, human resource director, or the district attorney. And also, they have another alternative, which is an external off-site toll-free hotline number established through the fraud, waste, and abuse program. And I'll touch on that at the end of the presentation. We do have a few county policies that are relevant. I think the code is, is pretty firm and clear, but there are a few policies that are relevant to ethics. One is nepotism. That's pretty straightforward. Most people know what that is. That's appointing authority is prohibited from employing another person within this third degree of consanguinity or affinity. Basically, that means family members. And we also have a gift, gifts and minor donations policy that the board has approved. Some of the requirements are that the donor expects nothing of value in return and that the donation is consistent with county interests. So, there again, not personal interests, county interests. Gifts can be accepted by department directors, elected officials, the cap, or the county manager, or the board of county commissioners, depending on the value. So, as it becomes more valuable, it has to go up to a higher authority. There is a provision for de minimis donations and gifts. Those would be defined as valued as $100 or less for gratuitous purposes. And the example is holiday gift baskets. If we do receive those, they're to be made available to all employees within the receiving division, department, or agency. So, we don't want to be rude to people that want to be nice during the holidays and say, no, that's a gift. We can't accept that. We will, but it needs to be shared with, with everybody fairly. And like I say, those are for de minimis, low value type of things that one would not expect would unduly influence somebody in their public capacity. We do also have an acceptable use policy. This is really an IT policy. It's designed to protect our IT assets, but it does prohibit using personal computing devices on our network. And it also prohibits accessing data that the employee is not authorized to do. So, they can't go fishing on our network for information that might benefit them personally, as an example. Training. We have different forms of training in the county regarding ethics. We do have our standard ethics training that is required of all employees annually. Currently, that is an online training that is basically a recording of the executive director on the State Commission on Ethics that provided training to the board. And we have that as a, a video training set up for all of our employees. They're required to take that annually. And it is offered in person to commissioners and employees biannually. So, every two years, we invite the Ethics Commission folks to come and do that training. We also have our supervisory management training program. This is a really high caliber, in-depth training for managers and supervisors that we offer in the county. It's a big time commitment and it's a very valuable training. I'm a big supporter of that. In this last session, we added a, a module on ethics for the most recent cohort, and we'll be doing that more. And we had discussions led by leadership with those cohorts about ethics and how they apply to their particular jobs and how they deal with talking to their employees about that. Also, a code of conduct policy. This is something that we are working on and is almost ready to bring to the board. We currently have a draft of this. It goes into a lot of details to provide specific guidance to employees of how we expect them to conduct theirselves, themselves. Like I said, that will be coming to the board very soon, and we will use that as the basis for further training for county employees. And then I think it's also very important, sort of informal training, mentorship, and guidance. We, we have informal discussions, usually led by me, the assistant county manager, human resource director, and/or district attorney for department directors and elected officials. It's something we spend a fair amount of time talking about and encourage our leadership to come and have those discussions with us. I've also encouraged department directors to engage in rather regular ethics discussions with employees as well on an informal basis. So, you can kind of see all the things we're trying to do to constantly reinforce that among our employees and how important it is to us as an organization. And then last but not least, we do have our fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. That is, is manned by our internal auditors, Moss Adams. They are independent contracted internal auditors. We receive complaints to that on a regular basis. They're reviewed first by Moss Adams. They make a determination if it is indeed fraud, waste, or abuse, and they, they will make some recommendations as to what we do with that. Those complaints come to the internal review committee, which is myself, assistant county manager, HR, district attorney's office, and finance director. And, and we discuss all of those. We take all of them very seriously and, and we take action as appropriate, and we document in the system what we had done for that. They're confidential. People can provide their complaints anonymously, and, and it has proven successful. I'm sure everybody is aware that we recently had a former Douglas County employee indicted for embezzlement. That started out as a complaint to the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. So, that's, that's the presentation. There's a lot of things we're doing at different levels to try to reinforce that with our staff and to be diligent as we carry out our public duties. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience? From the board? Anything online, Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no public comment online.
Mr. Cates, thank you very much. That's a good presentation and, well, worthwhile.
Thank you.
Would the audience of the board care to take a break before we continue or are we good to go? How are you feeling?
Maybe 10 minutes.
So, we'll go on with the next one?
Take 10.
Take, take 10 now? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break, be back here at, yeah, 5:2, 2 o'clock, right in there. So, we'll resume the meeting at 2. That clock is.
Recording stopped.
That clock's not on daylight saving this time.
It's changed. Nobody's tall enough to read it.
Yeah, really.
Quadley, DA's office. I'm presenting this ordinance on behalf of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. And the Sheriff's Office is proposing this to enhance the ability to enforce commercial vehicle regulations here in Douglas County. Currently, such regulations and commercial vehicle inspections are done by NHP in Douglas County, if they're done at all. It's done fairly sporadically. The Sheriff's Office recently had two additional deputies attain formal certification to inspect commercial vehicles and enforce these regulations. It's a fairly lengthy training process that they went through, but now they're fully certified to do that. So what this ordinance does is it adopts the existing federal and state regulations relating to commercial vehicles formally in Douglas County code. It clarifies that the Sheriff's Office can in fact enforce those regulations and cite violators into Douglas County courts if necessary. And that's pretty much it. We already have done this previously with respect to things like speeding or running stoplights, things like that. And this just adds the commercial vehicle regulations as a formal adoption within the code. So any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Zach, well, these are sheriff deputies that enforce the commercial vehicle section. Will they be focusing on that exclusively?
They won't be focusing on that exclusively. They're the two gentlemen that obtain the certification are regular patrol deputies at this point, so they'll continue in that capacity as well, but they will also add this to their portfolio, and there will be...
...so that they wouldn't necessarily have to go through that special process of calling somebody that is off duty to do that.
That I don't know, Commissioner Gardner, but I'll find out for next time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Zach, thank you very much. It's interesting to find, and I'm sure they'll be busy. All right, sir. Moving on. For possible action, discussion to authorize the Douglas County Animal Shelter to accept a private cash donation of $40,000 from the Julia Miller Trust to be used to support the animal shelter and authorize the county manager to execute all necessary documents to accept the donation. Liz Begovic, there you are. All right, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Brooke Ady. I am the Assistant Director for Community Services. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank you all for having us here today and providing us an opportunity to talk about animal services and these donations and the wonderful services that they provide. Liz Begovic.
Thank you, Liz Begovic with Animal Services. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you all for your hard work as commissioners. I would like to use this time to highlight how grateful we are to receive this donation in addition to a previous donation from the Duffield Foundation several weeks ago. Donation funds are much needed to support the activities and programs at the shelter. Two specific items that we're in need of, and with these funds, we will be able to fulfill those needs. One is a 14-foot bumper pull stock trailer to be used to transport livestock during disasters, medical emergencies, and seizures. And also, a companion animal evacuation and adoption trailer. This self-sustaining, climate-controlled trailer will allow us to temporarily house companion animals during emergencies at evacuation locations, and will also serve as an off-site adoption mobile unit for events throughout the year. I would also like to use this opportunity to put a little bug in your ear for some improvements the shelter is in need of, that maybe the county could fulfill. We currently need a surveillance system, lobby remodel, a laundry facility, improvements to our laundry facility, kennel and storage upgrades and improvement, shade canopy and structures, or additional trees in the exercise yards, and a new entrance sign. Our entrance sign is very, very old, and it says "Animal Control Shelter." In closing, I would like to acknowledge and thank the staff and volunteers at the animal shelter, as well as the citizens who continually show their support. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions or comments.
We'll open the floor to the audience. Any questions of Liz or comments? Scott, aren't you going to give her a big hoo-ah?
Hoo-ah!
It's a yee-haw.
Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. There's no public comment at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I have no questions, just a comment. You guys did one, I can't say that word, you guys did one heck of a job during the fires that we've just had. You did Douglas County proud, and I'm telling you, our neighbors who you assisted are very, very grateful for the services that you provided. And I'm so happy to see this grant coming to you, and I hope that you can continue to carry on to do the magnificent job that you guys are doing. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. I'm glad we were there and able to provide that service for them.
This is breaking news. It just came in as a text. Liz Begovic, woman's all-around champion this year. Is that for roping?
Yes, sir.
We've got some great athletes in this county and some really great ropers. They're kind of shy, but they're top-notch rodeo competitors, so congratulations. And go ahead and tell us what events you were involved in.
Thank you, sure. I'm in the Senior Rodeo Association, so when you turn 40, you're officially a senior in the rodeo world, I guess. So I do breakaway roping, which is like calf roping, but I don't actually get off my horse and tie the calf down. I do breakaway roping, team roping. I'm a healer for Jeff, my husband Jeff Begovic. And we do ribbon roping. We're also, we're partners together. And let's see what else. I don't do barrel racing. I don't have a horse for that, but pretty much all ends, all-around roping.
Well, that's really commendable, and you guys really put to the test during the fires. It was amazing what you accomplished down there in providing shelter for all of those animals, all the pooches, the gatos, the birds. It was just overwhelming what you guys managed to take care of. So it's real commendable, and gosh, it's just great that you've got this grant for these trailers, and that's tremendous. So you've already got them picked out?
I've been looking at some, yes. I've actually been looking at an evacuation trailer for quite some time.
That's great. I know it'll be put to good use, so it's very commendable. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I think we would be remiss if we didn't recognize that you were recognized last Saturday night as Employee of the Year for Douglas County, so I want to congratulate you on that effort and/or that accomplishment. It's not something you go out and try to earn, so I'm proud that the Chamber of Commerce and Douglas County is recognizing you for that honor. So much well-deserved, you know, and I don't think there's any question of why you were recognized in that regard. And Brooke, is it 80? I still don't know how to spell that. Scott fails to want to even try to articulate that himself. But anyways, I guess this is the first time you've come before this board as the, now the Assistant Community Services Manager.
Director.
Is that right?
Assistant Director, yes.
So...
And it's 80 like the number.
It is 80 like the number?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm sure we'll be seeing much more of you as time flows by, but congratulations on your employment to Douglas County.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comments or... Commissioner Tarkanyan, this is another athlete you need to keep an eye on. Thank you both very much. It was a real pleasure to have you here and have a good Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yeah. We need a motion on this. We've got the most important part.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Douglas County Animal Shelter to accept your private cash donation of $40,000 from the Julia Miller Trust to be used to support the animal shelter, and that we authorize the county manager to execute all necessary documents to accept the donation.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Noasad. All those in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Go get some trailers. Moving on to number seven. For possible action, discussion to award a construction contract in the amount of $596,400 to FAR Construction Corporation, DBA Resource Development Company for North County Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and change orders up to 10% of the contract amount. Approve the budget transfer from capital reserves to capital projects in the amount Who's giving the presentation? Phil, are you?
Commissioner Chairman, Rick Robillard for the record, Douglas County Public Works. I'll do the presentation. Good afternoon. This is the North County Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. Like I said previously, my name is Rick Robillard, Douglas County Public Works, Senior Civil Presentation outline, I'm going to provide some project background, project scope of work, the construction contract, and some of the project benefits that the county will see from this project. The North County Lift Station is located over in the Walmart area, right next to the Trader Joe's. That original station was constructed in 2001 to receive wastewater flow from the Clear Creek Plaza and Carson Valley Plaza. That original station pumped its flows to the Indian Hills Treatment Plant along 395 to Jack's Valley Road, and then from there, Indian Hills would take that sewer flow and convey it to their treatment plant. Lift station was modified in 2009 to divert the flows to Carson City due to diminished treatment capacity at the Indian Hills Treatment Plant. And then we just conducted the North Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades, which were completed in 2020, and it's currently our new treatment plant, it's online, which increased the Douglas County treatment capacities. The North County Lift Station Rehab Project is now scheduled for 2021, which would divert the flows back to Douglas County, ultimately receiving them at the North Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant for treatment. The scope of work for the project would be upgrades to the mechanical, electrical, and structural for the sewer lift station. These include valves, pipings, new pumps and motors, electric controls, lining the wet well for corrosion protection, and a new backup generator for power failures. The existing forest main modifications and a new forest main installation to convey these flows from Carson City and to Douglas County. Also included as part of the project is lining the downstream manholes after the forest mains. Sanitary sewer, after it comes out of forest mains, tends to be corrosive, and to prevent corrosion, you line the downstream manholes. So the construction contract, Douglas County Public Works publicly advertised for bids for the construction of the project. Four bids were publicly opened on October 28th at the Douglas County Public Works Conference Room. The lowest responsive and responsible bid received was by FAR Construction, doing business as Resource Development Company, in the amount of $596,400. The engineer's estimate from the project was $650,000, so it came in under the engineer's So what are the, one of the benefits of performing this project? Flows are going to be pumped to the new North Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant for treatment, which currently Douglas County pays Carson City to receive these flows on an average of $140,000 a year to receive these flows and treat them under a discharge permit. So based on those annual savings, this project can pay for itself in approximately five years from the savings of not having to pay Carson City Public Works to receive these flows. The lift station upgrades will extend the useful life of the lift station for additional 15 to 20 years due to these electrical and mechanical upgrades. It'll provide station reliability with the new generator and the wet wall relining. And it'll also, included in the project is we're going to make sure that we have some operational flexibility to maintain the ability to divert flow to Carson City in event of emergency or future forest main maintenance. So that allows us some operational flexibility in the future. So the recommended action would be to award the $596,400 construction contract to FAR Construction, doing business as Resource Development, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and change orders up to 10% of the project, and approve the budget transfer from capital reserves to the capital projects in the amount of $120,338. With that, answer any questions.
Any questions from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. There's no public comment online at this time.
Any comment from...
We've been shipping our sewage to Carson City, who have been processing it and turning it into effluent, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this will give us the capacity to not only treat our own sewage, to turn it into effluent, but any possibility of selling the effluent, which is damn near potable water by the time you guys get done with it. I know that the Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority sends it to, after it's treated, and it's sent over the hill where it becomes watering for a couple of the ranchers down here. Do you envision anything like that in the future?
This treated effluent would be included in all the other treated effluent that we store at our effluent storage pond, and then also, that effluent is then utilized by several dischargers, so Bentley uses that effluent. So this would be included in that effluent that is currently...
And it would also be used to help recharge the aquifer?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. We certainly have been anticipating after the rehabilitation or the expansion of the North Water, North County Treatment Plant for this to come forward. What is our timeframe on this, and when can we expect to see that effluent start, or that sewage travel to us versus transporting to Carson City?
The project itself, depending on lead time with the pumps and the motors and the construction contract, I would say within the next four months. We should be completed with the project, and flows should be received at the North Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Have we noted Carson City that we're going to be doing this?
We have.
Thank you, no other questions.
Rick, I'd like to ask you a quick question. Based on the total cost of the project and the savings, it looks like about a five-year payback, maybe less, maybe more, right in that area? Is that what you're looking at?
That's correct, yep.
How long does a lift station last?
That's a good question. Unlike potable water, sanitary sewer is pretty corrosive, pretty hard on equipment. The average useful life of pumps and motors is about 10 years, depending on several factors, but usually around a 10 years of operational life expectancy, not including valves and piping and other ancillary things. Electrical switchgear has about a 20-year useful life, generator's about a 25-year useful life, so this is going to extend the life of this lift station quite significantly.
The, it looks like a good project. Is there any possibility of using any AVK equipment?
AVK does, if they can meet specifications for certain valves utilizing that station, such as plug valves and things like that, absolutely, yeah.
You very much. Phil, do you have anything to add?
Commissioner Phil Ridker, Director of Public Works for the record. No, I have nothing else to add. I think Rick has covered this nicely for you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation, and it looks like a worthwhile project, so... These are all tough projects, like the water projects up at the lake and some of these other things, and it's, you're dealing with an interesting commodity. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the $59,006, let's try that again, $596,400 construction contract to FAR Construction Corporation for the North County Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and change orders that are up to 10% of the contract amount, and that we approve the budget transfer from capital reserves to capital projects in the amount of $120,338.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Moving on to number eight. For possible action, discussion on Douglas County Code 20.660.150, accessory uses as well as Douglas County Code 20.664.010, accessory dwellings and possible changes to the Douglas County Code concerning manufactured homes. Who's giving the presentation?
Chairman, I'm available for questions if there are any. I think Commissioner Gardner asked for this item. I can, I have discussed this with Commissioner Gardner, so I could describe a little as well or defer to him.
Commissioner Gardner, would you care to explain why you brought this forward?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Thank you for, and my fellow commissioners for indulging me this time. I'll try to keep it rather short. I'm not asking for any action and changing of any code today. All I'm asking and requesting from this board is for us to authorize the Community Development Department to look at this code for possible changes and come back to us at a later date with those possible changes. First of all, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners. We, as you know, we experienced a tragedy in Douglas County a few months ago in the Tamarack Fire, and it took out the dwellings of 12 families down in that area. I appreciate the commission at that time at a later date waiving all permitting fees for those folks who are trying to rebuild down in that area, so I want to thank you for that. As we looked at the rebuilding efforts of several of those residents, we had a number of individuals come forward and, looking at this particular code, and expressed some inconsistencies. What I saw was inconsistencies in the code and some, and some difficulty in interpreting the code, and so I previously, on two occasions, have met with Tom, Mr. Tom Delaire, our Community Development Department, and Mr. Sam Booth in that regard to look at what we could do in that regard. Currently, and I'm not going to try to, I don't, the code is very, very extensive, it's very difficult to go through, it has some inconsistencies, as I saw, but what it amounts to now is that the differences between, and for lack of a better term, I don't know how to really phrase it, other than a stick-built home versus a manufactured home, where a stick-built product for a home builder is actually, all the materials are brought to the site and built from the ground up, versus a manufactured home that is built basically on an assembly line in a factory to HUD standards, as I believe, and then transported to the site where the axles and the wheels are then, and the oaks are then taken off, and that product be placed on a stem wall that has the ability to have a crawl space underneath it. So as I see it, the primary differences there are how the utilities come up through the, through a concrete foundation versus a, an individual, a product that's built on a stem wall with the utilities coming up from an under-basement. So anyways, rather than delay this too much longer, I asked for Community Development to take a look at this, and I'm asking for this board to authorize them to look at this It seems that in looking at the code, certain sizes of properties, certain zoning areas would allow auxiliary dwellings to be either a manufactured home or a stick-built home. But it seems that when we look at the code, if you have a current stick-built home, then you can put an auxiliary dwelling on it, I believe, under 1,000 square feet as a manufactured home. However, if you have a manufactured home already existing on the property, you cannot put an accessory dwelling on that property that is also a manufactured home. And so you would then have to build a less than 1,000-square-foot stick-built home on that property. So I don't see the consistencies there, and it just seems to be a little bit out of whack to me. Now, once again, we're asking Community Development only to go back and take a look at this code and see if there are possible changes that need to be made. I think this would be also a good time. Our state legislature in their endeavors over this last legislative session also passed and mandated that counties take a look and somehow zone the concept of tiny homes in our community, and has mandated that homes as small as 400 square feet. For those of you not familiar with that, a 400-square-foot product is basically the size of a common two-car garage. Now, you know, that's the size of garage I have on my property is a 20 by 20. So anyways, I know that we are going to have to address that issue as well as a board in an ordinance process, and so I think maybe this would be... well as a board in an ordinance process. And so I think maybe this would be the best time for the, the Community Development Department to, to take a look at that process also. So that's, that's basically the, the long and short of it. And I hope I haven't taken up too much of your time to do that today. So, but I know Community Development, Sam Booth, can probably answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the audience? Any questions on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record, there's no public comment online at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comment. I have some comments. This code has worked well for the county. And by asking staff to go into this code, which is quite extensive, it's going to place a huge additional burden on what they're dealing with already. And they have enough to deal with. And the people that are in favor of this are already circling, circling the wagons. We received a letter from Maldonado and Carano, the law firm in Reno. "I am writing on behalf of the Nevada Housing Alliance, the statewide association of manufactured home dealers and related vendors to that industry. We are pleased to express our support of the suggested change in the Douglas County Code." Well, do we want manufactured houses or do we not want manufactured houses? And I am in opposition of having the staff spend a lot of time on this. We have other things to deal with. And that's my position. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one, one question for you. If we so direct you to take a look at this, how, how onerous will that be on your time?
Appreciate the question. Commissioner Rice, Sam Booth for the record. It depends on, of course, the extent or the scope of what we're looking at with the code. You know, potentially, this could be a pretty narrow scope, just to directly address the question Commissioner Gardner's had about manufactured homes being allowed as accessory dwellings. I think I had written down, you know, the suggestion to take a look at the tiny homes requirement. The state legislation asked, well, they didn't ask, they said that each county must provide an area in your ordinance to allow for provision for tiny homes. So we could, we could look at the language and see if drafting some additional language could also address that as well. But generally, just beyond that, once we get that language together, this would be a zoning text amendment because it's an amendment to the zoning code, the development code Title 20. So we'd put together a draft. That would have to be presented to the Planning Commission. And so just as soon as we'd have it ready, we'd present to the Planning Commission. Of course, as you know, they'd make a recommendation, and then we'd bring that recommendation to the board. Being in ordinance, we'd have two hearings, a first and a second reading on it.
Don't we already have some areas in this county where we're allowing the manufactured homes?
There, thanks again, Commissioner Rice, Sam Booth. There are manufactured home overlays, and there's a provision in the code that allows manufactured homes and lesser architectural standards within those manufactured home overlays. So to answer your question directly, yes, there are certain areas where the standards are lessened for manufactured homes.
How would this request that the Commissioner Gardner has made, how would that differ from what is already allowed?
As I understand it, and I think as, as the commissioner described earlier, one of the, the properties in question was subject, subject, it was, it was damaged and I think a full loss from the Tamarack Fire. If I want to think, it's the west side of 395 as we're going south there. So it's not within a manufactured home overlay. I think a good portion of TRE is in a manufactured home overlay, but this area being north of that along 395 is outside of that. So those, those provisions wouldn't apply to it. Also, just, you know, as I think through that, the manufactured overlay allows lesser standards for the primary structure on the property, the, the home that's built, the primary home. The accessory dwelling standard, pretty directly in the code that's in your packet, just says that manufactured homes cannot be used as accessory dwellings. So I think as we've applied that in the past, even if you're within that manufactured overlay, you cannot have a manufactured home as an accessory dwelling.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noesad.
Excuse me. How many homes were lost in that fire down there? That where this particular area is that we're, we're talking about?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I apologize for that, Commissioner.
Is it 100?
I, I.
12.
I was going to say 13, 12 or 13.
Or 12. And on those properties, how many outbuildings did they have?
It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay. So anyway, this particular situation where the mobile home was destroyed and the outbuilding was destroyed, I would assume, probably a poor choice of words, but don't, wouldn't those people have fire insurance?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay. So would they have fire insurance on the outbuilding also?
I couldn't speak to that. I couldn't speak to that.
Let's assume they did. The amount of money that the insurance company is willing to pay probably does not cover the entire loss.
That, that's a problem that we've seen with many of the homes that were impacted by the fire. With the rising values and, home values in the county, a lot of people's insurance policies haven't kept up with that.
Yeah, right. So that's a homeowner responsibility then, is to ensure that they have enough insurance to cover a loss. Okay. Is it the county's responsibility to make up for your, your lack of foresight in making sure that you have the fire insurance that you need to cover that?
If you're asking me, Commissioner, I don't know if, that I can, I can answer that, other than to say that, you know, if someone's approaching community development for a permit, are we going to take that into account? You know, no, we're going to state the rules of the code and the development code.
Okay, but you're saying that what the, what the intent is, is to bring in a manufactured home to replace the stick home?
As I understand it, yes.
All right. Now, if that's done, there is nothing to prevent other owners, landowners, to bring in a second mobile home. And the next thing you know, we are a whole mobile home park.
If, if your question is, would this apply countywide? Yes, it would. A change to the development code would apply to all areas in the county with just a few exceptions. So it's a pretty, pretty wide scope there. Would just clarify that you can only have one accessory dwelling on a property. So it wouldn't allow any additional, but a second, a second home on the property being the accessory dwelling.
And that would have to be stick-built? Because that's almost allowed right now?
Under today's code, yes. Unless, unless your property is zoned agricultural or forced in range.
Okay. For the number of people that had a loss, for us to change the code to apply to the entire county seems a bit, I don't know how to say it. I wouldn't recommend it.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Tarkanian?
Okay, let me try to grasp what's going on here now. Are we talking about a concern of the homes, some of the homes that were destroyed during the fire only? Or are you looking at a county-wide change to this?
Thank you, Mr. Tarkanian, to answer your question. The, the Tamarack Fire only brought to light a, a possible need to change this code. For instance, I currently live in a manufactured home in TRE. And so if I wanted to put an accessory, and I have 2.2 and 1/4 acres. And so if I wanted to put an accessory dwelling on that property, what county code now requires is because I already have my manufactured home on that property, I would have to go to a stick-built home on that same property. That, that's where I have a struggle with, is that we have, and most people that are building and buying property in TRE are, are putting on, there, there are a few man, stick-built homes there, but most of them are building stem walls and putting manufactured homes on those properties from an economic standpoint. And, and what the code now says is that if they wanted to put a secondary dwelling on that property, an auxiliary dwelling, they would not be permitted to put a second manufactured home on that property. And that, that seems strange to me that that would occur. So, so the Tamarack Fire just brought to light this inconsistency in what I see as a problem in our code. I would remind us that we also, okay, go ahead.
I would like to be informed when I make it, okay? So basically, if you have a stick-built home, as you say, in this certain areas, I assume you call, this overlay area, you can put a manufactured home as an accessory. But if you're, as an accessory dwelling?
As a, as, just as a primary structure. Sam Booth for the record, Commissioner Tarkanian. So in TRE there, Mr. Gardner's primary home can be a manufactured home. But because of the language in the code today, if you were to build an accessory dwelling, it has to be stick-built.
Okay. So then my question though is, what if it's a stick, if it's a stick-built home there already and they want to add an accessory, could it be a manufactured home?
No, it just has to be, it still has to be site-built, stick-built.
Well, either way, it has to be stick-built.
Correct.
And then what do you, then what do you, what are you hoping to accomplish with it if they're both required?
I just, I just, I, well, no, it's not required that the first one be a stick-built home. Okay? So, but, but, but.
No, but accessory dwelling.
Right. So.
I mean, so, okay, so if it's the first, if we only talk about the first-built home, then wouldn't that have to fall within the zoning of whether they allow manufactured homes or not? Well, no, we're not changing that, are we? You're not, okay?
No.
It's the second home then?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I can add a little clarification because.
Mr. Booth, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Sam Booth for the record. As I, as we met with Commissioner Gardner, I think we got to a potential solution where we could narrow the scope of the change to the code. And so in your, in your packet, there's two, two different sections in the ordinance that discuss this. The first section discusses accessory uses, and there's a definition for accessory dwelling. In the definition for accessory dwelling, it says that you cannot have an accessory dwelling that's a manufactured home. There's another section of code that actually then has the standards for if you're going to build an accessory dwelling, they must meet these standards here. One of those standards in that section, that's 20.664.010, is that the accessory dwelling shall be compatible with the architecture and materials of the main dwelling. So one suggestion that we discussed was it may be possible to remove the language saying no manufactured home can be used as an accessory dwelling, and clarify that the language that says that the, it must be compatible with the architecture of the main dwelling would apply, being that if you have a manufactured home as your primary home, then it seems reasonable that your accessory dwelling could be a manufactured home. If you have a stick-built or site-built primary home, then you must have a stick-built accessory dwelling.
Questions on? I'll try to figure out where I'm, I'm done. So basically, this is only going to apply if there's already a mobile, manufactured home in existence?
If we were to write, write the language as I just described it, correct?
And this motion is only determined whether you study it. And I would have very serious reservations about putting manufactured homes in certain neighborhoods and decreasing the value and so forth. I wouldn't vote for that. But I, I think that you're trying to narrow this down to where there's already manufactured homes and so forth. I guess the next question would be, is that the good question of the concern of the chairman was, how much time in that narrow scope are you going to take? And will that take your staff's time from something else that you're more pressing, or I shouldn't say more pressing because you can't judge what, what is, isn't. Will that take away from being able to fill the other responsibilities in your department?
Yeah. It, thank you, Commissioner Tarkanian, Sam Booth. It's a tough question to answer. We don't know on a day-to-day basis what applications might be filed tomorrow. We are probably the busiest we've been this year in any of the past handful of years, at least, that I've been with the county. But again, if this is a very narrow scope to this change of code, I think we could quickly put some language together. It wouldn't take a lot of staff time, and we could bring that back to you in just a few months.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noesad.
Question for you. That section of Title 20, when was that first written?
You know, I, I should have done that. Commissioner Noesad was to bring my full copy of the code because we do reference when these sections were updated. I didn't bring that with me, and it doesn't look like we included it in the packet. I believe it's been, it's been a number of years since the accessory dwelling section of code has been looked at.
Okay, a number of years, what does that mean?
I could, I, I want to say, just off the top of my head, 2014 or so. I don't know if Doug Ritchie has any idea.
Okay. Mr. Cates?
I was trying to look it up. I know there was a minor change in 2019 that dealt with the size of the accessory dwelling. I don't think there's been any other changes in a number of years.
So then we can assume, we can almost go back to the birth of Title 20. It's been in, it's been in place for quite some time, and it's been something that I think that the county would rather have it that way than to change it and allow for two manufactured homes on one lot or one parcel. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Booth?
If we make a change, it's going to apply to the whole county. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. Unless there's, you know, I suppose as, in reviewing the language, we could, we can also scour some other areas of the code, see if there's a way that we could, you know, limit it to certain zoning districts or certain areas. But just generally, yes, it would apply to the entire county.
So since its inception, this code has worked relatively well? Is that a true assumption?
That's, that's a true assumption, yeah.
Chairman, one other observation here. You might, you might be able to take a temperature probe right here and across this board and have you, nevermind. Hang on. When you get done there.
I apologize, Commissioner. We're trying to pull up that section of code so we can determine that date. What was the, the question?
Well, the, the statement is, I think there's a pervading feeling on the board that adding another mobile home to any lot in anywhere in this county is something that we don't want. We won't, we don't want to have manipulation of the code so they can make it happen. We like the code, I like the code the way it is right now.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Just a, a small thing to consider is that this board approved 159 manufactured homes on the Butch Perry Project on 30 acres, which is five per acre. They're all manufactured homes, all of the same quality that we're talking about here. So I want to bring that.
That's not a true statement. This board did not approve that.
I will correct that. The Board of Commissioners approved 159 manufactured homes on a 30-acre parcel for the Butch Perry Project.
There were some commissioners who were against it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Rice?
Is there some way to resolve this problem by changing the overlay in that particular area to allow this to occur without having it spread to the rest of the county?
So, Commissioner Rice, Sam Booth for the record, other options might be to establish a new manufactured over. a new manufactured overlay or expand the existing TRE manufactured overlay north to include, you know, certain other areas. Another option could be, well, you know, I want to say, I think we looked at that, and that wasn't a possibility, the possibility of a variance. Many of the architectural standards you can apply for a variance, but I believe since this is included in the definition, you really can't apply for a variance from a use definition. So, yeah, another option would be to expand the manufactured overlay. I think this is quite a ways away from the boundaries of that existing overlay, so it might be difficult to do that.
Mr. Booth, if there's a variance, then that opens it up to the whole county. Other people can apply for a variance, is that correct?
You know, the application, Chairman, of variance is pretty narrow and strict to that one property and maybe the unique conditions that may or may not exist on that one property. But there's always the potential that it could set a precedent for, you know, someone else with a similar circumstance to request the same variance.
It could come from a lawsuit from Maldonado and Carano.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Gardner?
At this time, then, I would like to move for the Board of County Commissioners to have community development look at Douglas County Code 20-660-150 accessory uses, as well as Douglas County Code 20-664-010 accessory dwellings for possible changes to the Douglas County Code concerning manufactured homes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not familiar with this process, but if you wanted to make an amendment to that motion, or at least make a suggestion, how do you do that? And what --
You could do it now.
Okay. See, this is my issue here. I certainly want to protect the integrity of neighborhoods and their homes and do not -- will not vote to see those devalued. There seems to be a certain problem in a certain area of the county from the fire, and maybe even expanding that to some other areas where this possibly could be acceptable, but we don't know because there hasn't been a study. I certainly agree with the chairman. We don't want Mr. Booth's department to spend a ton of time on something that very well may not be passed, but if we can make this a very narrow look into it where we're not spending a lot of your time, then I could go for it. But if it's not going to be, then I'm gonna have to go against it.
If I may, we'll take a vote on this. We vote on this item, and then depending on the outcome of that vote, you could bring it back as a future agenda item. This is a very complex ordinance. It has a lot of moving parts. It has worked well, and we have to be careful because, you know, we can already see that there are outsiders looking at this to see how they can take advantage of any decision that this board makes.
Well, then, if we vote no or don't second the motion, then this dies into another day, is that what you're saying? Or we can't change and do a more narrow motion?
Well, you could bring back another agenda item.
On another day?
Good. Chairman, if I may?
And Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. There's a pending motion. If there's no second, then the motion would die, and it'd be open for another motion, which could be by Commissioner Tarkanian, a more narrow, whatever the board's pleasure is, and there would be another motion. And if that was seconded, then there'd be a discussion and vote on that motion. Right now, there's a pending motion by Commissioner Gardner with no second.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noesad?
Question for Mr. Ritchie. It seems that I've heard this worked out before, where someone makes a motion, and there's a lot of discussion on it, and then somebody comes up and says, "I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that motion." Isn't that where we were just a minute ago?
That --
Where we would have to have a second on the amendment and a vote on the amendment, and then go to the first issue.
If I may, Chairman, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. That's correct. You can have someone propose a friendly amendment, and then there'd be a motion on the amendment, or the maker of the motion could amend their own motion, because there hasn't been a second.
Right now, I can just --
That's right.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion does not carry. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners asks staff to look at possible improvements to Douglas County Code 20.664.010 in regards to the specific narrow issues that have arisen through certain emergency factors here in Douglas County as a tamarack fire, and come back to the board with their suggestions.
Okay. This is the motion we're making, and it's open for discussion?
I will second that motion.
So, it's open for discussion right now?
Yep.
Second, a motion and a second. And for clarification on this, here again, this is a pretty complex issue. And just to have it thought out on the wing right here, it should be brought back as a written agenda item so that there's perfectly clear what everything is involved. And so, I'm against this, but okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, a second by Commissioner Gardner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Walsh, or Noesad?
What? This issue is being focused on a very, very, very narrow segment of the population. What have you got, 40,000 people, 45,000 people here? And there's 12 homes that were destroyed, that's 12 families. So, we're gonna make a major change to our code, which opens it up for other people to do the same thing. Now, I understand that Commissioner Tarkanian wanted to elucidate that a little further by saying, "Let's make it only for those 12 families." Well, somehow, I don't think that's for the common good.
Mr. Chairman? I am not saying I would vote for a change countywide, and that's certainly not what the motion is for. This is to have staff give us a recommendation, and I'm trying to make the -- for this to have any chance of passing. It's gonna have to be very narrow on how it's applied. If there's no way to make that work, then the staff can come back and tell us that. This isn't a vote for it. I certainly understand your concerns and agree with your concerns, but this isn't a vote to change it, it's just a vote to have it looked at.
Mr. Chairman?
We're looking at a lawsuit right here from these people, because that's what they do, all right?
I would suggest that if we do this, and we allow it to happen, the variance thing comes up, and I would have to ask all of you, if somebody came in with a variance to what you wrote and make it applicable to, let's say, Lake Tahoe, I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think we open ourselves up for that possibility of the variances.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The motion carries 3-0, or 3-2. Reports, updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and commissions that they may be a member of or liaison to, or meetings or functions that they have attended. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rice?
I had the privilege of attending a luncheon yesterday. The LTVA and the TDVA put on a luncheon for the workers who are building the event center at Lake Tahoe to show their appreciation for the hard work that they're doing. And I would like to say that the event center construction site winterization is in progress. The contracts have been awarded for the low-voltage systems and for the changing of the sewage requirements to expand and upgrade, and that it is on line to be completed and open in January of 2023.
There any others? At the Carson Water Conservancy meeting last night, one of the things they were talking about was the debris that will come coming off the mountains after the fires. And this, of course, will affect the Carson River. And to what extent, nobody knows. If you've been out there at all, you've already seen them, they're cutting logs, and nobody knows what'll happen. So, it's a serious consideration if we get some moisture. We've gotta get some moisture. So, that's just something we can expect. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no public comment at this time.
Seeing no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.